Good evening to everyone. We're ready to start the meeting and have a quorum of our Board of Education members here. Our first item on the agenda is the call to order. We'll now review and approve the agenda. And if I could ask the board members to look at the agenda, and if there are any changes, please let me know now. And if there are no changes, if I could have an, I would assume that's an approval, a motion to accept the agenda as it is. Thank you, Deanna, and a second to the agenda and not changing it. Yes, Ms., yes, Sheri, thank you. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by raising your hands, and that is majority of everyone that's here. Ms. Raschen, you were voting with that, too?
Yes, I approve.
Yes, okay. And we are now ready for comments from the public. Oh, wait a minute, excuse me, approve the minutes, not to dash ahead on things too quickly. Everyone has minutes to look at, and if you would look those over. We have a motion to approve the minutes from Mr., from Gene. Is there a second on the approving of the minutes? Thank you, Sheri. All those that are in favor of approving the minutes? And again, we have a unanimous vote on that. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? I see no one coming to the podium, so there being no one who wishes to speak, we'll move on to the next category, which is reports and recognition. And Dr. Lutzey, do you have for us introduction of the new Canaan High School principal and director of finance and operations?
I do. Two very exciting introductions for the board this evening. I'll begin with our new high school principal. It is, it's my great honor to introduce Mr. William Egan, who's our next principal of New Canaan High School. As you can imagine, hiring a new high school principal is a significant undertaking, and the process, which was led by Gary Cass, included focus groups with faculty, students, and staff, and parents, a survey with faculty, staff, students, parents, and the community, and three rounds of candidate interviews. The interviewing committee included board members, building and district administrators, instructional leaders, teachers, and parents. Their outstanding commitment to, with this group, again, led by Gary Cass, it was instrumental in helping identify Mr. Bill Egan as our next principal of the high school. Since 2009, Mr. Egan served as the principal of Womago High School, which is a regional seven through 12 middle high school in Region Six in Litchfield, Connecticut. This last year, Womago was one of two schools in Connecticut and 51 nationally to be recognized as a 2014 National Blue Ribbon School. Additionally, Womago Middle School this year is one of two finalists for the Connecticut Association of Schools Middle School of the Year. Prior to his principalship at Womago, Mr. Egan served as assistant principal at Brookfield High School, as dean of students at Norwalk High School, and his teaching experience prior to that includes high school-level business, middle school-level language arts, and mathematics. Mr. Egan's an innovative and intuitive educational leader who's passionate about helping all students succeed and excel. He's dedicated to developing and nurturing a positive school culture and climate, and values the partnership between schools and the community. There are many things that helped distinguish Bill throughout this process, especially his expertise as an instructional leader with a deep understanding of current standards and assessment practices, and his expertise with the implementation of technology into curriculum as a transformational tool for learning. I am thrilled to welcome to the Board of Education tonight, Mr. Bill Egan, our next high school principal. Bill?
Well, thank you. I honestly couldn't be more happy to be the next principal of New Canaan High School. Hearing those words is a little bit humbling, but to be named the principal of New Canaan High School is truly an honor that I'm humbled by, I'm thrilled by, and I can't wait to, to lead your fine high school. I mean, honestly, New Canaan High School is one of the best high schools in the state, if not the country, and it's got an amazing academics, arts, and athletics program, and I look forward to leading it into the future. So, thank you all very, very much.
Welcome, from all of us.
Well, secondly, but not, after an extensive search for a new director of finance and operations, which we began back at the, at the beginning of the year, one candidate distinguished herself above all other, all others. So tonight, I'm thrilled to introduce you to Dr. Joanne Keating, who's our next director of finance and operations. Dr. Keating will assume her new role on July 1st, 2015. Dr. Keating has served as director of finance and operations for the Weston Public Schools since 2006. Additionally, she's worked as the business manager for the Ridgefield Public Schools and the Woolcut Public Schools, and before that, she was the chief financial officer for the town of Nagatuck in Connecticut. Dr. Keating was awarded an EDD in Educational Leadership from the University of Hartford, holds an MS in Organizational Management from Central Connecticut, and a BS in Accounting. She holds professional certification as a Certified Administrator of School Finance and Operations in North America, an intermediate administration and supervision certificate, and a School Business Administrator Certificate here in Connecticut. The search committee found Dr. Keating's integrity, financial and budget skills, collaborative management style, and extensive experience in school performance and operations to be particularly well-suited to our position here in New Canaan. In addition, Dr. Keating has managed and led many school construction projects throughout her career, which, given tonight's agenda, will be particularly helpful in the years ahead. Committee members were especially impressed by Dr. Keating's proven ability to manage multiple complex projects simultaneously, and her depth of knowledge and experience related to all aspects of the director of finance and operations. Tonight, it's my great pleasure to welcome Dr. Joanne Keating to you on the Board of Education.
Well, thank you. I would also like to thank you very much for the opportunity to work here in New Canaan. It is a great school district, and great opportunities lie ahead of, for us here. Looking forward to the building projects. I know Nancy's been hard at work at doing those and getting those in line for you, and I'm just really looking forward to the opportunity, and want to thank you very much.
Welcome to both of you. We feel very honored to have you here. We look forward to the many good things that you're going to bring to our school system and continue to help us to grow and be better.
If I could say a quick word, you know, this, it's a very busy year to hire the high school principal, but to hire the high school principal and the director of finance and operations simultaneously is, is an awful lot of work and a challenge. I want to thank Gary Cass for his leadership throughout this process. He was on top of everything throughout. He put together excellent search committees that included board members, administrators from the building, from the district, parents, staff, students, teachers, others, and really, thanks, it's thanks to Gary's hard work that I think we were able to identify and hire two outstanding educational leaders to join our, our ranks here in New Canaan. So, thank you, Gary.
Did you want, did you want people on the committee to speak?
If they'd like to.
If anyone on the committee wants to speak, they're welcome to. I know that this is a surprise, so you don't have to. Yes, Sheri, go ahead.
I would just first like to say welcome to you both, but specifically, I served on the search committee for the high school principal, so I can attest to the very thorough nature of the national search, and I just want to say that I'm thrilled to welcome Dr., Mr. Egan to the high school. And I would just say, what really stuck out in my mind as distinguishing was some of the innovative communication forums that Mr. Egan held with his students, and really the outreach with his student body, and I think that's something that we're going to welcome at New Canaan High School. And also, some of the innovative technology programs, and again, in this digital age, I think we're going to really be looking forward to your ideas. So, welcome. It's a great district, and we're so pleased to have you here.
Thank you very much, Sheri. Deanna?
And I'd also like to welcome you both, and as someone who served on the search committee for Dr. Keating, I'd like to reiterate what Dr. Lutzey said, is that we were all very impressed with the depth and breadth of your experience. You have very large shoes to fill, but we feel very confident that you will able to fill those shoes. So, thank you very much for joining us. We, we have lots of work to do, so, thanks.
That's terrific. Thank you. And realizing that you both need to be at your jobs, other jobs, early in the morning.
Yeah, despite everyone's request, neither begins before July 1st.
Yes. So, if at any point you want to excuse yourselves or go, we certainly understand.
If I could say one more thing.
Sure.
For those who haven't noticed, Mr. Egan is actually wearing a New Canaan Rams tie tonight, so if that, if that doesn't, you know, speak more than any words we could say about why he's a good, good, good addition to the team.
Sheri, thank you for noticing. That was terrific, and thank you for that school spirit immediately. Now, moving to our next very important topic tonight, is the Saks Building Project Update. Mrs. Raschen and Mr. Bell have been working extensively, hours, meetings, day, week after week, and we thank them for all they've done, and we welcome your presentation.
This is going to cover both, both this and this, right? The plan, remediation, and welding, right? Both. Yes, they're different. This will just be the project that will be doing this. Yes.
All right. So, um, thank you very much for having the Saks Building Committee back tonight. We wanted to update you on the work we've been doing since we presented back in January to this body. As you know, the members on the chair, Jim Bell, who's here, is vice chair, Ken Campbell is our secretary, Bill Walbert, Molly Lubke, Roger Williams, Amy Murphy Carroll, Nancy Harris, Alan Sneath are the members. As advisory members, we have Dr. Lutzey and Greg Macedo, Bob Willoughby, Hazel Hobbs, and Sangita Appel. So, thank you all for tirelessly coming to our weekly meetings. The project team includes, as before, SLAM, who's here, Gene Tyrone, and Kent Moorhart, who's our owner's rep and had been doing the second feasibility study. Ty and Bond, the environmental firm, and just to let you know, we are very close to hiring a project architect. We had a thorough request for qualification, followed by a request for proposals. We've selected our top candidate. We think you'll all be very pleased when we announce that soon. But a brief recap of our work. So, last fall, at that point, the Saks Auditorium Building Committee began its work and engaged SLAM to do the feasibility study regarding the needs of the auditorium. As you recall from January, we found in the course of this work that the auditorium lacked kind of critical, necessary storage, and that the surrounding music classrooms were significantly undersized. So, as a result, we presented a couple of options to the Board of Education and the town, both of which would fully renovate the auditorium, but the second option also addressed the storage and undersized music classrooms. And what I thought was a terrific and vigorous conversation about that option, and the questions that were raised, the town bodies determined that we should change our name to the, we should become the Saks Building Committee, and that we should assess the full academic spaces and academic needs of Saks in light of the changes to the curriculum since it was renovated 20 years, nearly 20 years ago now, or the plan was done about 20 years ago, and to see what we needed to propose. So, we were renamed by the Board of Selectmen, the Saks Building Committee. Our scope was expanded. We were asked to develop a new option that would fully renovate the auditorium, provide storage for the auditorium, right-size the music classrooms, and provide enough general academic classrooms to meet enrollment projections. As you know, Saks was built to, in 1997, to 1,200 students. Enrollment is now 1,292. Projections are for the enrollment to go to 1,355 in the 2017-2018 school year, to 1,369 in the 2018-2019 school year, and to 1,409 in the 2021 school year. The projections then keep the enrollment in that range. So, these enrollment increases, as well as changes in the curriculum and expanded state mandates that have come into place over the last 15, 20 years, have placed significant pressures on the building. To do the second feasibility study, we, again, we had SLAM, Kent Moorhart and Gene Tyrone, do that work, and that's what we're presenting tonight. So, this study is going to inventory and benchmark the existing spaces at Saks, analyze the need for academic spaces to meet current and projected enrollment, and it's going to provide two conceptual floor plans for the Board of Education and the town to consider, and high, high-level cost estimates that go along with these. Now, both of these conceptual floor plans that you will see are going to fully renovate the auditorium. They'll both provide a smaller, a small addition in the music wing, smaller than what you, the option you saw before, that will provide needed auditorium storage, instrument storage, and larger group instruction music rooms. And each of them also adds a new wing of classrooms in the northwest portion of Saks. I think that was the option we were asked to look at. The difference is in the size of the new classroom wing. In one, the classroom wing is two stories, and it's going to provide approximately 12 new classrooms, as well as a relocated STEM room. The other option is a single-story option, which provides for the relocated STEM room, relocated from the music area, as you'll see, and then seven new classrooms. So, high-level cost estimates will begin for both of these. Again, these estimates don't include the remediation work, which I think is going to be updated later on in this meeting. So, why are we presenting two options? Well, basically, the Saks Building Committee felt that, most of the Saks Building Committee felt that the net 12 classroom addition and the changes in the music wing substantially met all the needs that were identified. However, it's a significant project, and there's been some discussion about what the town can afford at this point, so we thought it was wise to look at a different alternative, net seven classroom option, that would also meet, be a tremendous improvement for Saks. So, that's the presentation you'll get tonight. I wanted to let you know, we'll be back on May 5th. I think the meeting's going to be at 5:00 PM, and it's going to be at Saks, right?
At Saks.
In the Coral Room, so you'll get to see. And at that point, we will ask you to endorse a project. We're then going to present this feasibility report, as well as a request for pre-construction funds to the Board of Finance on May 6th, and on May 20th, we'll make the same request for the pre-construction funds to the Town Council. So, upon, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Moorhart.
All right. Thanks, Penny. Okay. I'm pleased to be here today. Kent Moorhart from the SLAM Collaborative, along with Gene Tyrone, we've been working together on the feasibility study for Saks for approximately two or three months since January, to look at Option 3, as it's called, which looked at inventorying the space for the entire Saks building, and doing a needs analysis for what, how many classrooms and science rooms would be needed to support the enrollment projections moving forward. The scope of the project included that inventory, and then also would look at a couple of conceptual ideas on how to maybe lay that out, and then looking at costs. We performed a classroom count for the entire school. We included a room takeoff for each school, so we understood the area for each classroom. We focused our attention on classrooms and science rooms, and then we analyzed the capacity of, of each of those existing rooms based on recommended space standards for net square feet per seat in those spaces. And then we also looked at the utilization of those spaces, referencing the master schedule, and we coordinated with Greg and his team to determine other current and future programs that the, that the school would like to provide, and what the space demand would be for those. The existing building is a large building. It's about 240,000 square feet, and what we found by going through the inventory was that, over the course of the past 18 to 20 years, many spaces that were originally designed for one use have been co-opted for another use. For example, I've, I've gone through some floor plans here and put some stars on to, to provide an example of that. We've had team rooms that have been modified and now, are now being used as special ed classrooms. We've had storage rooms for, that were originally storage rooms for science rooms, have been also co-opted for special ed classrooms. We've noted that there were a few curriculum director offices that are, that are in the basement, if you will. They're on the lower level, but they're in an area which is primarily for storage, and that's because it's the only place that they had available. Looking at the main level, on the east side, we see a similar pattern where the team rooms have been reused or co-opted for special ed, as well as science storage. There have been a, a build, or classroom that was originally slated for special ed that has been co-opted for a health classroom, as well as a plan moving forward for a language arts classroom to be taken offline as a language arts classroom, and turned into a classroom moving forward in the 15, 16 academic year. On the west side of the main plan is, is where the most impact is. We have, again, loss of team rooms, loss of faculty workroom, which is now a special ed classroom. Fitness room, which was originally a phys ed space, is now a special ed room. Over in the, in the music area, there was originally a conference room, which is now a music classroom. And, and there were also undersized music group performance classrooms, which we talked about last time, as part of Option 2. But without going through all of this list in detail, you can see that there are significant space pressures at, at Saks in order to deal with the enrollment projections and programs that are, that are being offered. One final thing to note is that on the upper level, there are, again, two lang, or two computer labs that are planned to be co-opted for academic classrooms in the 15, 16 school year and 17, 18 school year, and I, I overlooked the one on the main level, which is also planned to be modified into an academic space in 17, 18, to, again, deal with that enrollment projection. Putting it into a different format, looking at it as a chart, you can see the, the different adaptations of the spaces across the lower level of the building, the, the main level east, the main level west, and the upper level. And without adding these up, you can see there's a fairly large impact on initial, originally designed spaces that are not being used in that same, same function, and all of which has impacted the general capacity of, for academic space within the building. Part of our needs assessment was to look at how many classrooms does, does each grade require to adequately accommodate the enrollment. Fifth grade is a little bit different than grade six through eight, so we look at that separately. The existing conditions, currently, there are 14 classrooms and three science rooms for a total of 17 academic rooms for fifth grade. All of those classrooms are approximately 660 square feet. If we use the 32 net square foot per seat ratio, they can all seat about 21 seats and flex to about 22 fairly comfortably. They're all utilized heavily, 75 to 88 percent, which really kind of translates into almost 88 to 100 percent, because there is one class period per, per day that's lunch, and all students are in lunch, and therefore, those spaces are open. But by and large, the, and then the science rooms range in size from 850 to 975, and can support anywhere from 21 to 24 seats. There are a couple of exceptions. Room 124 can support 27 seats, but by and large, for fifth grade, the rooms are adequately sized. It's just, you'll see in a moment, that there aren't quite enough of them. So, we take that data, we use a basis of 22 seats per room, which is a mandate from the, the Board of Ed on that range of 20 to 24 students, so we went right down the middle. We then take a look at the enrollment projections, in this case, for 2017, 18, 19, 20, and 2021, and we, we do the, what we call the direct count, and we, we run those numbers through each year of enrollment on the side here, and you can see, you may not be able to see it on this chart, but there's a range, a need of, of anywhere from 15 to 17 classrooms to support that. We ran it for 22 seats per classroom, and the, using different numbers of classrooms, 17 classrooms, 18 classrooms, and 16 classrooms, and we honed in on 16 as the right number. And the red box on the chart indicates there are a couple of years, or actually, three years, where the enrollment exceeds the capacity even with 16 classrooms. However, the worst-case scenario was it exceeded by 18, so if we have 16 classrooms, the, we could spread those extra students across those 16 classrooms, and have anywhere from 23, and, and a couple instances of 24 students per classroom, should these numbers play out. So, we felt that that was a comfortable range, or a comfortable number for classrooms. So, our recommendations for fifth grade alone were to have a minimum of 16 academic classrooms, and, which will allow us to address the projected enrollment. Science classrooms, there should be three. One thing that we noticed, well, I'll get to that in a moment. For science classrooms, we utilized a 41 net square foot per seat ratio, which is a little bit lower than what we typically see for, in, in some other districts, but in talking with the district, or talking with Greg and, and the administration, that is an adequate number for Saks. So, we use that as our basis moving forward. Grade six through seven, similar approach was taken. The existing conditions are 12 existing classrooms in sixth grade, 10 in seventh, 12 in eighth, for a total of 40, and 11 shared, for a total of 45 classrooms. There are 12 science classrooms for a total of 57 academic rooms for the grade six through eight. In general, they were, they range in size from 660 to 740 square feet, and therefore can support 21 to 23 seats, and flex to 25. Again, they're highly utilized, and six through eight science rooms are approximately 600, they range anywhere from 660 to 860. The 660 ra, end of the range is relatively small, and I've noted those exceptions on the bottom part of the slide here, where you have three science classrooms using the 41 net square foot per seat that can support approximately 16, one that can support 16, and two that can support 18. And as we go through here, you'll see that those are planned to remain that way, but I want, we needed to report that. And there are a few anomalies where we have some classrooms that can support more than you would put into a class, which is the 22 seats per, per classroom. We looked at the classroom count for two different enrollment years. The, the max enrollment in 2021, which was the 1409 total, five through eight. This breaks out the six through eight enrollment of 1054, and then also assumes the five sections per, per week, per class, and yields a demand for 65 classrooms, 13 of which are science We also looked at the 17, 18 enrollment, same number of seats per classroom, but the six through eight enrollment for that year was, is 985, or projected, and that results in a demand for 60 classrooms, 12 of which are science classrooms. Taking all that into consideration, this chart shows the existing compared to the 2017, 18 enrollment and projected number of classrooms, and the 2020, 21 projected number of classrooms. number of classrooms. So anywhere from 60 to 65 classrooms is what the numbers play out to be. Our recommendation was to split the middle and provide 50 classrooms, not 48 and not 52, but 50, which is an addition of five to the existing count. That number works well also with the teaming model, which allows us to have 12 per grade for a total of 36, two shared general classrooms, and then 12 world language, and then 12 science classrooms, which represents a zero net add to where you currently, what you currently have for science classrooms. Bottom line of that recommendation is 62 academic rooms for grades six through eight. We couldn't ignore special education as we went through our analysis because so many spaces had been co-opted over the years for that purpose. We noted that many of the existing special ed rooms are converted from alternate rooms and uses as mentioned before. Some of them are somewhat inappropriate. Corridor alcoves are being used as breakout space for special ed. There's a lack of privacy, poor acoustics with that kind of a scenario. Some of the team rooms have lots of exterior glazing, which allows for abundance of natural light, which makes it difficult to control, and it may not be appropriate. That may be solved with other means, but also the basic fact that teachers' team rooms have been taken away for that purpose of special ed is the primary impact. And we also couldn't help but note faculty support was impacted fairly heavily with faculty workroom, copy room being co-opted for special ed over the years as well as those team rooms. And the faculty dining room was co-opted for a science room for fifth grade because it had a sink. Summarizing these recommendations, grade five classrooms, an addition of two classrooms at about 770 square feet are recommended. An addition of one science classroom at 900 to 1,000 square feet would allow faculty dining to be reclaimed and the science room assignments could be shifted around the room, around the building to accommodate that. Grade six, seven, and eight, an addition of five classrooms, again, at 700 to 770 square feet. And then an addition of four special ed classrooms to permit the team rooms to be reclaimed. And one further recommendation for the number of special ed rooms is that we recommend sizing them as full-size classrooms. I'm sure many of you know that many times special ed resource rooms are anywhere from 400 to 500 square feet. The regular-sized classrooms that we're recommending are 7 to 770. But the reason we're recommending that they are full-size classroom would allow for special ed rooms to be dispersed throughout the floor plate of the building rather than building smaller special ed rooms and having them co-located in one spot. It would allow you to take one, perhaps one of the smaller classrooms that exists in the current floor plan offline as a normal classroom, make that a special ed classroom, and then you get a new one in the addition at the appropriate size. And finally, faculty support, reclaiming the faculty dining space currently serving as the grade five, grade five science classroom and reclaiming those team rooms. Okay. Planning concepts. Putting all of this into some floor plans, some conceptual floor plans, we looked at the northwest quadrant, so the existing conditions. This is really the only place left on this campus that's got any room left to develop. This campus is pretty tightly packed unless you start making modifications to athletic fields and so forth. There's an aerial where we have your current bus loop and the main entrance is right over here. And this is the northwest wing, which is a two-story element here, a single-story element here, and some walks and some trees in the site. We took a quick look at the planning and zoning requirements for a project of this type. To add on to this building, it would have to go through the special permit process in town. It is a process that's available for municipal facilities in a residential zone, so it's permissible. It just needs to go through that process. And then parking will need to be addressed, number of parking spaces will need to be addressed as part of that special permit. We did not really look at that in any great detail as part of our study. It was more related to the building. We did look at other utilities that are in that region of the site, however, and there are, there is one storm drainage line that runs through that area, which would have to be relocated. And one final point to look at was, we were using the design drawings from 1997, which showed a fairly straightforward rectangular and turnaround. And we found in looking at the aerial, that didn't quite get built exactly according to those plans where this drive sweeps a little bit, in a little bit different alignment from what's shown on the drawing, comes in a little bit closer to the building here and sweeps around that way. And that's going to be important when we start looking at the layouts and how things fit on the site. One last thing we looked, or one other thing we looked at was the plumbing fixture count. We took a look at the existing building and how many plumbing fixtures there are. Anytime you add space, you need to take a look at that and see if we need to add any kind of restrooms. Without getting into too much detail on this chart, the building code requirements for this building with 1,400 students and all the assembly spaces that are existing in that building are significantly higher than what you currently have, which is not atypical. Typically, any school project, you would, the architect would apply for a building code modification for plumbing fixtures based on non-simultaneous use. When you go through the math in the building code and you add up the number of plumbing fixtures you need based on your assembly uses and your educational uses and your business uses, it sums to a fairly large number. It would be cost prohibitive to provide that many, nor would it be necessary to provide that many because you would never have all of those uses being at full capacity at the same time. At least that's the basis of the modification. So any project moving forward would go through that process and the architect would take it through that process. But to give you a little bit of a rough idea, we ran some numbers. So the top line is the building code requirement. The second line is what you currently have. The third line is an approximation of what you might ask for as, or what you might provide in an application for modification or less from that line. And then the fourth and fifth lines are what we're suggesting could be added in the two scenarios that we looked at for conceptual planning. One being a 12-classroom plus STEM in a two-story configuration, the second being a single-story configuration where we would have seven classrooms plus the STEM relocated from the southwest portion of the building. And without getting into all the numbers, basically the bottom line of this slide is that we recommend adding bathrooms to this addition. We also looked at egress capacity. The two-story configuration is the one that controls. In this area of the building, there are two stairwells here and here that both have some remaining capacity within them. The stair is not maxed out per the building code as far as the number of occupants that that stair can serve. So as we developed the layouts, we made sure that we had adequate capacity based on whatever we were proposing, and we would move about 80 new occupants into this stair, which currently has 89 in reserve, so it still wouldn't be maxed out even in the proposed solution. And in the second-story concept, this stair goes away and gets rebuilt, and you'll see that right now. This is a Concept 3A, which is a two-story configuration. It provides the one science room that we talked about in the recommendations, the 11 general classrooms, and then it also relocates the STEM classroom from the southwest quadrant of the school. It includes toilet rooms on both levels, both boys and girls, and some supporting storage rooms. Each floor level is about 11,000 square feet, and the way it would work is, this is an existing classroom. We would tie through to the existing corridor system on the northwest wing through the classroom, which would result in a smaller classroom being created in that one area. We would then tie through the stairwell area on this end, and we would relocate and rebuild the stair here because that stair would then have to get larger to accommodate the occupant load from this portion of the building, which currently goes into that stair, as well as the occupant load from the new, which will also, at least part of the occupant load from the new, which will go into that stair. And then it was, working with the committee, it was very important that we had a loop circulation around the building so we didn't have any terminus in the building that could only go through one corridor. On the upper level, actually, I'm sorry, I'll go back to this level, we have seven classrooms that will fill that bill of about 700 to 770 square feet. These diagrams are based on what we call a planning module. They're not laid out as far as doors and walls and windows and everything, but the planning module allows for the building gross-up, as we call it. So these measurements that you see on the plans are outside of wall to, say, a center line of a wall. And as you, as a design would get developed by an architect in the future, as you start to put thicknesses to those walls, that planning module will support the necking down, if you will, of the spaces to become right-sized at 700 to 770. On the upper level, four more classrooms, the relocated STEM room and the science/STEM classroom. On both floor levels, you would have the bathrooms, or we located the bathrooms in this corner, which was the furthest remote location from where the other supporting bathrooms are in the existing building over here, which made sense because you could then serve these classrooms with those restrooms as well as perhaps some of these. Also made sense to keep all the plumbing facilities for the STEM and the science room in the vicinity of the bathrooms for economy. And there is also a storage room on both levels, which would support all the classrooms for either academic storage, science storage, and other miscellaneous storage. How that lays out on site, you can see, as I mentioned earlier, the way this alignment of the existing road comes in, there is a conflict where the footprint of the proposed layout would require perhaps a small realignment of that road, but not insurmountable. It is factored into the cost model that we're going to show a little bit later. But this scheme creates a nice courtyard in the middle to allow light to continue to be brought into those existing classrooms as well as the new. So we presented this as a scheme that meets most of the needs. It provides the recommended number of science classrooms, the recommended number of general classrooms, the recommended number of special ed spaces. It reclaims the faculty dining room and the four team rooms, permits special ed currently in corridor alcoves to move into a space. And it also permits the reclamation of the language and computer labs that are slated for being converted to academic spaces in the near term. Whereas if you don't necessarily provide the recommended number of classrooms, those, when taken offline, may remain offline from their current use. Some other considerations are, three of the existing six-through-eight science rooms remain slightly undersized, as I mentioned earlier. The curriculum director offices remain in the basement as they currently are. The faculty workroom and copy room remain as special ed, and the storage rooms converted to special ed also remain. So just wanted, we wanted to make it clear that this is not addressing every need, but it's addressing most of the needs. As Penny mentioned, finances are what they are, and it's difficult to raise dollars for projects. So we looked at an alternative, single-story concept, which has a reduced number of general classrooms. However, it retains many of the same features as far as a loop circulation. One difference is that it does, this particular tie-in points do not impact the existing stairs at all. The intent was that we tie through classrooms at the lower level only, so we only net out two existing classrooms that get a little bit smaller to allow that to happen. Similar to the two-story scheme, we net out the same two classrooms, getting a little bit smaller, just one on each level. This has six classrooms, six general classrooms, which are the orange squares, and then it has the relocated STEM and the recommended new science STEM classroom. We also were able to get some toilet rooms into this floor plan and keep it all at one level. Another important driver was the setback from Farm Road, and I didn't mention it on the other because that fit within it fine. This one, you can see, we have, in order to get that sixth classroom and the bathroom in there, we had a small little bump out on this side, and we had to keep it within that 35-foot setback, at least for the purposes of this study. We wanted to make sure that we kept it within those boundaries. Perhaps a variance could be pursued in a project, but we didn't want to assume that. This concept is about 12,000 square feet. And how that fits on site is very, it's similar to the two-story scheme and encroaches a little bit more on this drive. So in both cases, some realignment of that bus turnaround would be required if these were the layouts to move forward. We kind of deemed this one as meets some of the needs. It does provide the recommended number of science classrooms. It provides one fewer general classroom than recommended, and it does reclaim the faculty dining room. However, it excludes the recommended special ed spaces, and reclamation of the team rooms is not an option necessarily for this scheme. Special ed that's currently in the corridor alcoves will likely remain. It does impact the reclamation of those language and computer classrooms in the future. And the other, the last four bullets are the same as the previous scheme. Shifting gears to the southwest quadrant of the building, I put up option two here to remind everyone where we were with option two for the performing arts classroom spaces. Briefly, we were proposing the addition of three new group performance classrooms on the south side of the building, capturing some storage space and a couple of additional classroom spaces. The drive to get those additional classroom spaces was the pressure that we talked about at the outset of this presentation, the pressure for new, or for additional academic space. In doing this, we dislocated or displaced an art room and a STEM room, and we replaced them here because at this point in time, we were not looking at the entire building. We were just looking at this quadrant of the building. So without getting into any more details with that one, that was just kind of a refresher of where we were. And that had an affected area of about 24,000 square feet, just over, where some of it was new construction, some of it was heavy renovation, and other was light renovation. We're proposing a reduced scheme in that area because we're able to get additional classrooms and a STEM room over in the new addition. This scheme proposes two new group performance classrooms, one for band, one for choral. And the art room that's currently here would get relocated to where the STEM classroom is now, and the STEM goes into the new addition. The general music classroom that is in this corner would get shifted over to the existing orchestra room. The orchestra room would then shift to the existing band room. The small choral- The small choral would stay where it is, the small band would stay where it is, and there would be an addition of a small office, music office. We capture a stage storage area here immediately adjacent to the stage to accommodate the risers, the acoustic shells, and so forth, other things that are on stage currently. And the existing set construction and storage area that's currently across from the ceramics room would remain in that function, and we had a lot of discussion about this during, with the committee, and it just needs to, we kind of all came to the same conclusion that that needs to be cleaned up and better organized, and that would allow for that space to be better utilized. The key points about this scheme are that the new band room stays within the footprint of the existing building, in that region of the building. So the real only, only real addition, whoops. Let me skip ahead. So this is a moderate renovation zone. No longer are we proposing an addition on this end or up here, which preserves the existing steps and ramp. It converts the work in this area to be moderate renovation rather than heavy renovation, which would include structural renovations. Now it's just more internal renovations. And then a more modest addition, which is a little bit more easily done, there is a small, single-story bump out for the entrance and that small office in the corner that would likely be demolished, and then new addition built in its place in this corner. And that, this scenario, the new construction is about 3,300 gross square feet, and the total affected area, including the auditorium and other spaces within the footprint, the existing footprint, is about 20,000 square feet. I'm not going to run through all the details on this, I think I just went through it. This is just a listing of what I just said, so I'm going to skip over that one. When you compare where you are existing with option two and option three, I then did a variance between option three and two to give you a sense of where the pluses and minuses occurred between option two and option three. Again, I'm not going to run through all of these. I think by and large, we're dealing with enlarging all of the group performance classrooms, albeit not quite as much. But the, looking at the choral room on top, it's about a 200-square-foot reduction from where we were with option two and option three, and a similar reduction for the band room. The orchestra room was around 2,200 square feet in option two, it's now about 1,480 in option three because it's just taking over the footprint of the existing band room. And you can see the rest of the impact there. I think, actually, one more point I want to make. On option two, because we were trying to get those classrooms in, we did not have a dedicated stage storage room. Option three does have that. In option two, it was actually a shared storage and scene shop. So that was probably a little bit too much pressure on one space in option two, whereas it's accommodated independently on this one. So again, we kind of deemed this as meeting some of the needs that we originally set out for ourselves over in that corner. It does increase the size of all the group performance classrooms. It provides a combined instrument storage space, which is not dedicated space right off, right immediately off those group performance rooms, but it's all very close proximity. And that was right here in the corner. It provides dedicated stage storage and continued use of the existing scene storage and relocates the STEM room. So at this point, Gene is going to go through opinions at probable cost for these schemes.
Okay. Now the fun stuff. So option two, what we did from the last time is we took just the classroom additions that we had proposed as part of the auditorium and broke that out, just so you could see what that cost was compared to where we're headed. So right now, that component that Kemp mentioned is about $4.8 million. That has since been reduced to accommodate just what Kemp had mentioned, which would be the small addition in the corner and the renovations to the performing arts spaces, which was a reduction of about 4,000 square feet. When you add that in there, and because of the, even the type of renovations that we were doing, had a pretty good impact on the total cost. So we were able to bring that down to just under $2 million, you know, and still kind of dealing with comfortable contingency, and it also includes all the design fees and soft costs, as we call them, that need to be put into the project that don't really go into bricks and mortar. The next option that we looked at was the 3A option, which was the largest option, which was the 12 classrooms and a STEM room. So that one, you know, there's a couple components there because there's some heavy site work involved. We also carried money for the renovation pieces inside of the classroom itself, or inside the existing facility. And, you know, we have to bring plumbing into the site to deal with the bathrooms and the two-story structure and some of the relocations of the roadways. So we're looking at approximately $6.2 million for the construction cost. We carried another $450,000 for furniture fixtures and equipment that would go into. Usually those are, we call them soft cost items as well, but basically outfitting the classrooms. There's another 1.3 of escalation, builders' fees, general conditions, cost to do the work. Again, we've escalated them to the summer of 2016, so we've kind of built in some inflation for next year. There's about $1 million in design fees, consultant fees, testing and inspections, owner's rep fees, and pre-construction fees. And then at last, there's about $700,000 in contingency, which is something that roughly right now, we'd want to hold just over 10% for this project. The scaled-down version, which is a single-story, eight-classroom addition, again, still has the same conditions where we are still tying in in both locations, so that cost kind of remained the same. The footprint fairly large, so we still have the same impact on the footprint of the building on the site, so those numbers really didn't change. But, you know, the big change is obviously you're not adding a second floor and the quantity of classrooms. So we went from about $9 million to about $5.8 million, you know, running through the same kind of scenarios on the construction costs and the soft costs, and about $400,000 in contingencies is there as well. So what does this all mean? It means that if this is one project, let's say we do the seven class plus the STEM plus the auditorium plus the music classroom, you're looking at about $13 million project. And again, we're, right now, we're assuming it's one project, it would run concurrent, and you're looking at 13 months' worth of construction. The, you know, so again, we're looking at economy of scale. What do we do if we decide to build the classroom ring separately or independently from the auditorium? You could add about another $1.3 million to that, and that's really just, we escalated it over two years, assuming that it wouldn't happen the next year. So we went two years out, plus the additional general condition to kind of come up with that amount. So the first option, the seven classroom, has about $1.4 million in contingency. So it's fairly comfortable, you know, the big contingency comes in the renovations. The smaller contingency is in a new construction, less risk. So right now, we're probably on the, a little on the higher side. You could arrange a 7.5% to 10% on something like this. But at this early stage, we really want to keep it kind of lean. We are trying to make this a funding budget. Once we get through schematic, we would expect the number to come down, contingencies to come down as the design is developed a little further on. The 12-classroom plus the STEM is almost $17 million, and then there's probably about a $1.7 million increase if that is also delayed for two years beyond the initial construction of the auditorium. Contingencies there are about $1.7 million, again, about 10%. It's a little less because, again, you're going vertical, there hasn't really been any change of, the disturbance on the site is about the same. That's all I got, right? Okay. Questions? A little quiet, I don't like that.
I have a question. If the, maybe we're not on here. If we were to do the, I'll call it the seven or the eight-room solution, and then in the future decide that we had made a mistake and we needed the extra five rooms, and obviously, probably, from what you said, we would probably still keep it as a second store, which means we have to rip off the roof of the existing building, perhaps rearrange stairways and things of that nature. Have you put any kind of cost estimates as to what it would take to obviously destroy a good deal of what was built, or some of it, and then to rebuild that, as well as put the new structure into place? What type of costs might that be to do it in a two-phase thing?
The, we discussed it with the group. There are two schools of thought there. One is you would design the structure for the single-story, the structural steel, the foundations, and also our recommendation would be a concrete slab for the roof as a future expansion. So if you decided to go to the second floor, you've minimized some of the expensive stuff. One, you can do it, and two, you've minimized some of the disruption on the lower level. It's just something we really don't recommend because it's rarely ever done. I don't think I've ever seen anybody actually do that. And by the time we all get around, everybody forgets that it was even capable of doing that. The more probable option there is to do a hybrid of that, is maybe build the two-story project, but only fully finish the lower level. So you, what we call core shell, the second floor. So the structure's there, you have, the square footage is there, and you're minimizing that expense of fitting that out, mechanical systems, electrical, all the walls, sheet rock flooring, all that stuff. So if you wanted just a, an idea, it would probably be in between those two costs that we just gave you. Probably more, I would add probably a couple million dollars to the 5.8, somewhere in that range. And we can study that if you think it's something that would be considered. But I think going with a single story and fitting it out, I don't really think that's a good idea.
So you, I would conclude that if the projections of enrollments were wrong, or for whatever reasons we needed the extra room, that we'd really be up the creek without a paddle if we did not build the concrete roof, whatever you call that, solution. We'd be in a tough place.
I mean, you're mitigating risk, so it's, how much do you want to, how much insurance policy do you want to buy? And that's really what it is. So, you know, you can do three scenarios there as well. And to us, and our recommendation would be to build that whole second floor, because you're almost there anyway. Then you, then your reaction time can be quicker, your fit-out time is quicker, your future costs are less, as opposed to having to literally build the walls up, put a new roof on it, rip it off, even with the support below it. But again, if it's still a better option than doing nothing.
Well, we could put the portables that we would need in the courtyard.
Portables are always attractive.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sheri.
Well, first, I just want to say thank you to Penny and Sangita and to all the building committee members, because I know you've put many, many, many hours into this, and I consider this to be a very well-researched and well-thought-out proposal. And members from all different town bodies, a very collaborative effort, so I think that's, you know, to be applauded. I just want to start actually by reiterating a point, the enrollment numbers that you started with, that we are talking about a building that was designed and built for 1,200 students, and we are soon going to 1,409. And I get actually a lot of questions from parents about the projections and how, you know, how accurate are those projections? And I think it's important, and maybe Gary can add to this, that those numbers are based on matriculation, so those students are already in our system, so there's very little, you know, variation in the projection. If you're talking about kindergarten projection, that's different, but these are very, you know, scientific matriculation projection numbers. So I, as a parent of two students, you know, two sex students, I very much strongly advocate for building capacity, but I guess I will say probably what everyone here is thinking, which is, wow, those are big numbers, you know, bigger than we, you know, I had anticipated coming to the meeting tonight. So I guess, I just, actually, my question would be more for Greg to say, if we're being asked to look at the difference between option 3A and 3B, you know, 12, the difference between 12 classrooms and eight classrooms, you know, what do we lose by going to eight classrooms? Really, seven classrooms plus a STEM, right?
So I think Kemp had a chart that showed the cost benefits of both options. You know, being in a place where I have to operationalize a space as enrollment grows, I think the long-term view from where I sit is the most cost benefit. You'll never have a chance to touch this campus again, and so if you look at optimizing that space to the 12-classroom solution, I think you'll get your money's worth.
But can you just, from a learning perspective, I mean, you are the master of making do. You've done, you've done that for years. Can you make do with eight classrooms?
Well, it's a given, any additional space will create some relief to the existing pressures. I think both those slides give you a pretty good view and perspective as to how many needs are going to be addressed in each solution. So generically, or generally, we're going from meeting most needs in the 12-classroom solution to only some needs, and I think that delta makes a difference.
Would it be helpful, since this is all new, not all, much of it's new to us, too, is it possible to put those charts back up, the ones that you're talking about that do list the differences between them, and so we can have another chance to look at them and really take in that information? Because I think Sheri's asking a good question that we're all trying to grapple with, what is the real specific difference with it? And I'm sorry if that's maybe...
Yeah, no, it's fine. These are the charts you're talking about? Or, this was the list?
Yes.
It's tough to see with that light on, but...
Maybe we should shut the lights off so we can memorize the list.
The listing of what 3A addresses relative to 3B. So 3A provides all the recommendations as far as science room, classrooms, special ed rooms. It permits you to gain back the faculty dining room and really support the instructors and the teachers a bit more than they are right now. You know, they've kind of lost all of their spaces over the course of time. So the faculty dining room would come back online for that purpose. Not necessarily all of the spaces, because there were still a couple of faculty workroom and a copy room that would still remain as special ed or some other function, presumably, even with this scenario. But what it permits also is that's a special ed that's currently being taught in the corridor alcoves would have a home, have a space. And it permits that short-term solution for those language labs and computer labs that are going to be taken off offline in '15, '16, '17, '18 to come back as those functions. And I think that's important, you know, we had a fair amount of discussion about that during, with the committee about, you know, are they needed? The answer is yes. So if they're taken offline and remain offline for classroom space indefinitely, then that's just yet another thing that's lost in the overall building.
Sheri, can we look at the other list, the one that is the harsh reality?
3B provides the recommended number of science classrooms, one fewer of the general, one fewer of the recommendation for the general classrooms, but it doesn't provide any of the recommended special ed rooms. So reclaiming those team rooms is, would likely not be possible. The alcove, the teaching in the alcoves would likely remain, possibly even, well, would likely remain. Impacts would, it would impact the reclamation of those language and computer labs as well because the space just wouldn't be there to relieve that pressure in the future. because the space just wouldn't be there to relieve that pressure in the future. Does that help?
Yes.
I guess we're all sort of looking at it again. Some, there's more to the list, just some of the, the big items that you, thank you for going through those. Yes, sorry, Jen, sorry, I was...
So just kind of speaking on this, Greg, I was hoping maybe you could, I have a couple of questions for you. I just want to ask you about timing on this. But, so, you know, it's, it's clearly a big money differential between the two options. And like, I mean, just because I don't know, like, we haven't, I mean, dining, like, when I first was here, they had a fifth-grade dine, like, teacher's lounge, but I've never was aware that the other teachers had. Like, how important is having a teacher's lounge? How important are the team rooms? Like, I think now they probably meet in classrooms, right, when the kids are dispersed? Like, how would that impact teaching curriculum if we don't have these teaching spaces, teacher, like, faculty rooms? And then the computer language labs? Like, like, you know, we're, we're maybe possibly moving to, you know, I mean, I don't know, like, how important are, it's used for testing, but the computer labs, language labs? Like, what are the losses if we don't get this, these 12 classrooms? What are the losses if we lose these spaces?
You know, I think when you do have time to compare the two charts, you come to the conclusion that it's our neediest students that we continue to balance the space needs on. So in the eight-classroom solution, basically, our special ed programs, which have been pushed into inadequate spaces, have to remain. So yes, the side benefit of that, of putting special ed students in right-sized rooms, is that it frees up the faculty workspaces. And certainly, that's a benefit to the professional way we do our work. But I think that the compelling rationale to do the space is to move those special ed instructional spaces to their correct sizes, instead of having those services delivered at the end of hallways and in former offices.
Okay, that makes sense. And what about the language labs and the computer labs?
We're going to anticipate that we're going to want and need a world language lab into the future because of its specialized nature. Same thing with visual and performing arts. I think those are two arguments to be made for, for fixed labs, no matter what type of student mobility may come into the future. So I would argue that at least two of those labs are going to be essential. I think the other two are going to depend on, you know, where we go with enrollment and additional space.
Right, so if we don't get this space, like, what happens then? Are we not able to...
If no new space is built, then we have to convert those four lags, those four labs forever.
Right, and then, and then what?
Well, it'll be quite a reduction to the, to the world language instruction and the, and the art and music instruction in terms of those two specialty labs.
Okay. And then I just have one question, timing-wise, like, difference in timing? And like, are we, we're not able to do this when the kids are in, I mean, are we able to do this when the kids are in school or not? Or just, just summer project? I mean, how does this...
Timing and the phasing is, is important. It is something that we considered when we were looking at the pricing of it. Because obviously, the timing not only affects the students, but also affects the price of the construction. So the, if the project becomes one whole project like we talked about, we would start with the classroom addition in the summer and do the, the tie-ins during the summer, and then work outside for the rest of the school year and have it protected and cordoned off. We'd probably screen the windows so the kids aren't distracted. And, and some of the heavy demolition, or heavy, heavy work can probably be done in certain days when kids aren't there. The addition has to be done first because of STEM room relocation. We really can't take that offline until we have the new classroom in, in place. So the idea was to do the addition and do the auditorium concurrently. And then, as you run across the, the rest of the, the following season, when that classroom wing is finished, we would do the small addition and the renovation inside the, the music classrooms there. So it's, it's important that the sequencing and the timing has to get, has to get worked out.
But you said two years.
No, it wouldn't be two years, no.
No.
How long?
No. I think if, if we do the whole, the whole thing, I think the whole thing was 13 months.
13 months.
Yeah.
That's everything, the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yes, Jean.
Obviously, there are cost differences. And, and again, you've, you've said the committee has discussed a, an approach. The consultant has called them a scheme. I would like to call a, a plan. I don't like that scheme word. That there are cost differences, and of course, and, and one might be a middle ground to do the, the first-floor approach with the whole thing done to, in a way to support the, the, the other plan, the 13-room plan. I think one of the factors which hasn't been discussed, and it's obvious it's a financial one, it's not really a construction one, is that interest rates now are such that if the need to expand the upper level would occur three, five, eight years from now, given interest rates which will most likely be up substantially, the actual cost will be substantially greater. I'm sure this will be a bonded approach. And whoever's looking at this from a cost perspective should bear in mind that interest rates are at a phenomenally low rate now and will probably not be at that rate when the opportunity comes or the need comes to address issues.
Right, and it's not just the interest rate, which is, is a great point. It's the, you know, the cost of construction. It runs its own inflation index. And, and right now, it's on an upward curve. It's been on the upward curve since probably 2011, after the, kind of, the, the market rebounded. So we're projecting about 4% a year, which is also compounded as interest is. So as you bring that out, those, those are real numbers.
Well, well, yes, but I believe though that if you were to take 4% a year for five years at 20%, if you look at the probable cost of money four, five years from now, it's going to add more than 20%
Correct.
To the...
Absolutely.
The annual interest payments now versus then.
Right.
Sangita.
I, I think, you know, you brought up some great points. I think the interest rate and the bonding rate is fabulous right now. And I think we need to kind of consider that in the whole term when you look at the difference between the two prices, between the eight and the 12. And then a point that Sheri brought up, just about the 12 versus the eight. There's been a lot of time spent on doing all this research, where Kemp has done a fabulous job, you know, talking, finding out, you know, what the state standards are for space needs, looking at, talking with administrators and teachers about what our, our needs are for classroom space, whether it's science or general classrooms. And when you look and think of this whole project, it's like, that's what we need to meet. I mean, we already know that the students are here. If we go with an eight-classroom, we're losing a general classroom. So where are those kids going to be going? That means we're going to have to go against our guidelines, increasing our, you know, classroom sizes to fit that. We know there's no more space that Greg can manipulate because we're using all the spaces. In fact, we haven't been able to reclaim our lab space for, a computer lab space, our language lab space. So where is that extra classroom of kids going? And they're coming two or three years down the road. So we know we, we have to have that space. So is, are we looking at doing the portable at that? And then we have to kind of put that into our plan, because we have to plan for those three years, because it'll be around just before you know it. The other thing is, is that the special ed needs, I mean, it is, again, the people who are, who, you know, most need is space. And, you know, sound makes a big difference for these children. So you want to have a space that's appropriate so they can learn and grow. And we're looking at all, the whole child, and every child. So I think it's really important as we look at this, that yes, money is always a factor. But, you know, we want to be penny-wise and not pound foolish of trying to save some now and then realizing, you know, we have a lot of things that just weren't meeting our needs, and we're in dire straits and no more space to build out. So I'd really kind of want to make sure that we kind of really evaluate between the two that there's a lot of factors involved, and that the 12-classroom space really is not even really meeting all of our needs, but it's a much better fit for where we are and where we're going.
Sangita, I mean, Deanna, excuse me.
I just, I was a little, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the eight, well, the eight-room option, seven classrooms and a STEM space, in that it, it doesn't address the, the language lab thing. And, and I think a few people have mentioned previously that we, we had a pretty big investment in FLESS. And so we're going to have quite a few kids coming through the elementary schools. And, and we aren't providing space to appropriately, or, or, in, in the, in the best way, what educators believe is the best way to do it. We're not providing space to do that. And, and so I feel like we've, we're taking two steps forward and one step back, you know? And, and I don't think that anybody wants to see that happen in the district. And looking at the design options, I think this option three, I like that you've moved the STEM classrooms out of the fine and applied arts area. I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to have a majority of the kids, you know, doing their classrooms in, in their classroom work, and then a couple of them have to go down to the art wing to take a STEM class. It just, you know, with those three-minute passing periods, it doesn't allow much time for those kids. You know, I, I wouldn't want to be the kid who has to race down the hallway to, to get to STEM classroom when it's, when it's, you know, away from everything else that they're taking. So, and, and I sat in the board of finance meeting last week, and, and the question was asked, when we do this, are we providing the space that will take us in through the next 20 years? You know, because it, it really is silly to, to, you know, put $10 million or, you know, whatever we're going to put in, and then find out in five years that we need portables or we have to come back in and, and re-renovate. I mean, I hate the option of putting in a cement ceiling and, and re-renovating. As someone who's renovated her house, it, it is ridiculously expensive to renovate. You know, I would much rather start with a, with a blank slate and just do it once and do it right. So I, I, I just wanted to, to advocate for that. But also, I'm having a hard time visualizing a one-story addition aesthetically on, on Saks. I mean, it was, it was an award-winning building when it was built. And not that we should do it just for that reason, but I think people in this town take great pride in, in sort of putting things in this community that are visually appealing. So I, I just, I don't know how much you've looked at sort of the aesthetics of a one versus a two-story addition.
To answer your question, our, the scope of our study did not include any kind of elevation studies or, or massing. It was strictly limited to planning in the plan dimension, if you will.
Jean.
Building and what Deanna has said, that I heard you describe things as compromise, split the difference, meets most needs, meets some of the needs. When you're doing a project like this, I don't, I just can't imagine where you would just say, okay, we're going to kind of meet most of the needs, some of the needs are in compromise. But moving on from that, 20 years ago, when we, we expanded the elementary schools, we had projections. And it turns out, the projections turned out low. And we have moved, in fact, the fifth grade to Saks. And that could easily occur. And it's clear that the eight-room solution is a compromise. It may be that the 12 or 13, 12-plus STEM room may in fact be based upon estimates which turn out to be inaccurate. I just can't imagine not going, at least with the 13 solution being that it's, on the face of it, it's a, the eight-room one is a compromise. And in fact, what happened 20 years ago, and is playing out today in terms of cramped quarters, could, there's no reason to say it, it's out of the question now, or it's a low, low probability. I wonder how many times it takes us to learn that, that projections can be wrong and they're just projections. And we're going against those projections currently in terms of we are growing more than the typical state student population, which is decreasing. We're increasing, as Darian is.
Thank you, Jean. Sheri.
So I, I just wanted to expand on something that Deanna said about how our community takes pride in our facilities, which they should. But I have to say that as a parent, as a Saks student, I cringe every time that I hear stories from my sixth and eighth grader about some of the ways that they feel the overcrowding at Saks. For example, my sixth-grade daughter, who is a band student, told, told me that she recently had to pull a chair into a storage closet to practice her saxophone duet with her partner. Like, literally pull a chair into a storage closet. So for, if there are any community members out there listening to this who, you know, are unsure of the capacity issues, you know, I, I do think we should renew the topic of having tours or, and make sure the tours are during passing hours, because it is, you know, it's something those students are dealing with every day. And, and I, I do think we should take great pride in our facilities. And we do have a capacity issue, and we need to address that, looking to the future. I did have just one question about if the eight, again, I'm back on the eight versus 12, but if you had any discussion about how that would configure with, like, would there, would the northwest wing be an eighth-grade wing? Would that be different if it were an eight-room versus a 12-room classroom expansion? Like, how would that space be allocated?
We didn't, we didn't look at how the classroom assignments would be flowed through the floor plan, the total floor plan. That would be something that the architect would look at in, in the design of the project.
Is that something, Greg, you might be able to add some details?
Well, I think generally, generally, generally speaking, the, if you just think about our campus 5, 6, 7, 8, if we just really put it on a turntable and shifted everything about a quarter of the way to the northwest, our eighth grade would continue to inhibit, inhabit rather, the new wing. And then we'd be moving our 7, 8 program, and then our 5, 6 program. So there would be some alterations to what I just said. But in terms of a grand idea, we would be flexing the space to move into the northwest wing with our older students.
Thank you. A lot of good questions that have been asked, and, and your answers have been very, very helpful. I've been taking lists of the kinds of things that have been spoken about. One that was mentioned and was perhaps of bringing up the portables. And I think there's something that we need to make sure people understand is that today with the security problems that we're dealing with, we would have to have security in every one of those portables. There would not be a parent who would elect to have his or her child to be in a portable. So I think people need to consider that. People have told me unanimously throughout town that they don't like the way they look. And they especially don't like the way it looks at the entrance of our town, so to speak, coming in on South Avenue. But I just repeat that as things that have been said to me, to add to the list that we've been discussing. Does anyone, yes, Deanna?
I just, and this is more of an enrollment and capacity comment, is that sort of the demographer, as, as Sheri had said, is kind of looking at what was in place in the district moving through. And, you know, we had a, had a fairly long discussion last week at a meeting about sort of what's happening to the school population. And, and if you look at what's going on in South Avenue and Main Street, and even, you know, some of the subdivisions of lots, you know, sort of, smaller homes are being, you know, knocked down to be, you know, rebuilt at, as much larger homes. So things that might have been empty nester homes are now becoming large family homes. And, and so that, I, I don't think any demographer can fully, you know, evaluate sort of what's happening in this community. And, and that only serves to foster more people coming into town. And, and, you know, and we're also going to have some more affordable housing that needs to come into this community. And, and that will bring other families in. So, you know, I, I, and with where our educational system has been, you know, being a top-ranked system in the state, you know, if we look at what happened with the, you know, the trending information we received, you know, the state is down 5.5% from 2010. And, and New Canaan's up 3.3% from 2010. So, you know, people are coming here for a reason. And, and with what's happening in the building community, you know, they're going to continue to come here. And, and so I just, I think we need to look strategically and long-term at, you know, I, I would hate to, you know, come out with eight and then see, you know, the 20, 20, 21 revision being, you know, 1,500. You know, we want those kids. I think it's wonderful. I think it's a, it's a, a great statement for what our community and our, and our educators are doing here. But, but we need to provide for that. And otherwise, you know, I think people will get frustrated and, you know, it'll impact the quality of the education, so.
So as, as you've mentioned tonight, so much of this does hinge on those, the demographic projections, right? The enrollment projections. So we have had a meeting with Dr. Kennedy, who is our demographer through NESDEC. And we're meeting even again tomorrow morning with him, you know, in a conference call with some members of the committee, who are really, we're looking at the methodology. We want to be sure that at least he has a sense of what's happening in town, and to really dig into those numbers. You know, the board of finance, the town council in the last week or so, we were able to share what we know about the, the... to share what we know about the projections and demographics at this point. That's always a moving target in a way. We can be, as we mentioned, I think Sherri mentioned before, pretty confident that when we look at four, five years out at Saks, those are students that are in our system as they move through. There are different factors that they use to apply because over time, some grade levels do tend to trend upward a little bit and some tend to trend downward a little bit. And they look at those as they're making the projections. Statistically speaking, essentially, the, looking at those projections, they'll be within 5% of their, of the projection 90% of the time. So, when you look at, when you think about how valid are those numbers, that's what, they do this for hundreds of districts and that's what they found to be the statistical probability that they'll be within those ranges. And then that increases, that 5% increases by 1% per year as you go out. That's the feedback we've gotten so far. So, we'll talk again with Dr. Kennedy tomorrow and sort of, and talk to him about some of the other trends and things in the housing markets and others to try to have those be as accurate as they can. But of course, they are just, they're predictions, you know, based on what we know, what we think we know to be the trends, to be what's happening. But only just a couple of years ago, they weren't predicting downward. So, as we look at it, we're looking at numbers now and trends that are going upwards. And so, Dr. Kennedy, in the conversations we've had with him so far, is relatively confident that we're in the right path. And we'll keep talking to him and learning from him about how these are put together and sharing any other information that could be pertinent. And we'll certainly share that with you.
Does anyone have any other comments? Our agenda is unfortunately a little bit confusing process.
Could I just interrupt? I guess, so, you know, we're going to be back. This is a first read. So, I guess it's our typical practice on a first read to have someone make a motion.
We need to.
And so, I think that we should, you know, if someone were interested or were willing to do that, it would be voted upon at the meeting next Tuesday, May 5th, at 5:00 p.m. But I think we need, just as a matter of Board of Ed procedure, to have that motion made and seconded for. It can be amended, as everybody considers it and puts forward more questions.
We need to make a change in our agenda if we want to do the vote now because our agenda says that we're going to be voting on these two things in the action items, not in the reports and recognition.
This would just be a motion. It wouldn't be a vote.
Right, true. We do need to move it to have that, if we're going to do that. Maybe, yes, Deanna?
I move to, move the vote on the Saks building project to now.
To this, up into the agenda.
Up into the agenda in the reports and recognition.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second on that, Gene? Thank you. All those in, let's see, any discussion on that motion? No discussion on the motion. If all those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous of the group that's here. In summary, some of the things that we've said across this discussion period have been talking about the interest rates being low and the bonds being able to be better purchased at this time, general conditions would be saved, disruption would be minimal, need to meet the needs of the kids that are here now, spending millions to compromise and difficulty in parent conference space. The list is quite comprehensive. Is there a motion that someone would like to make about the first read? Gene?
I would like to move that the board approve the, I don't know, I think it was 3A, the 12-room plus STEM room proposal. I realize, by the way, that as a recent Town Council meeting, for instance, there were different possible proposals and the way it was handled was one proposal was made and then it was assumed it would be accepted, in which case that would be the end of it, or if it was rejected, then other proposals would be made. This could happen as well.
Yes.
But to get things going, I just, again, move that we approve the 12-plus-one STEM room addition, I think it was 3A.
So, you're moving to approve for a first read?
Yes.
Yes, a first read.
And the assumption that if that fails, we can, at that, the May, the next Tuesday meeting, we could then have some other proposal on the same subject.
I assume that you're including in that the renovation of the auditorium and the addition in the southwest corner for the music classroom.
I am, but for clarity, for my own sake, does 3A include that or is it just deal with the north?
Yeah, 3A would include all three components.
Okay, so 3A is, again, I move to approve 3A.
So, we have a move to approve for a first read, the option 3A of the Saks building project as recommended by the Saks Building Committee. And we don't vote on that right now, but we do just second.
I don't know if they recommended that or just presented it.
Yes, second, I'm sorry.
I would say that the, if you want, were you asking what the Saks Building Committee did? We didn't, we didn't have a formal vote yet. We did want some input. I would say we had vigorous discussion about it. Everyone was in favor.
Right, so you did not recommend, come recommending, you just presented the various options.
That's correct.
We'll change the wording as presented.
Yes.
Okay, as presented. So, move to approve for a first read, the Saks building project, 3A, as presented by the Saks Building Committee. And I heard a second from Sangeeta. And we don't vote on that at this point. Any other further discussion on that? Okay, and so, we'll pick it up, right, so we don't vote on it tonight on that part?
No, no vote tonight, just a.
Just a first read.
Yeah, thank you very much for your question.
Can I just bring a copy of this of the presentation?
Oh, the presentation? Yes, we'll be emailing you a copy of that shortly.
I think we'll also be posting it to the website.
We'll be posting it to the website as well, very shortly.
So, people that are watching this perhaps on television might want to look up on the online to see what this is because it's an excellent presentation and particularly visually to reinforce all the things that have been said.
It will be up in the morning.
That's certainly fast enough.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and we thank very much the committees. We have two, really, that we had two, the Saks, the remediation. We'll save the remediation plan then to the action item part of the agenda, if that's all right. And then we do have another report and recognition, which is the Statement of Accounts from Ms. Harris.
Well, you have before you, I handed out just the summary page of the February Statement of Accounts, just as a point of reference for you. I think it was easier for us to look from month to month. And then you have the summary page along with the detail for the end of March. You will notice that there have been some fairly significant changes in terms of some of the balances. So, I'd like to walk you through the big picture first and then we can jump into a couple of the details. You will see that our salary projections overall have been, in terms of fund balance, has been reduced from 174 to 135. You'll also note that benefits have, the fund balance has moved from 36,000 to 81,000 fund balance. The contracted services has remained relatively flat. The facilities operation, you'll notice, has moved from a negative figure into a $66,700 positive. The other purchase services and the predominant item there, as we all recall, is tuitions, is remaining relatively flat at $752,499,000 in the negative. The books, equipment, and supplies has moved from a small negative to a small positive fund balance. And then our other expenses has moved to a smaller negative. Let me then tell you what some of the significant changes are, two of which, one is in the benefits account under the unemployment. We continue to track unemployment. We had budgeted $100,000 last year based on where we were six months prior to that in December of 2013, when we had had, as we ended the year, with about a $50,000 expenditure. So, we had overbudgeted in this current year. So, I'm now showing a fund balance of approximately $70,000 in that one account. That accounts for the major swing in the benefits. The other significant change, as Bob and I were talking in reviewing the fuel and utilities, was a significant cost savings from original projections and heating fuel. As you know, Bob, we were given a number of energy conservation dollars last year and Bob has diligently been installing. I had given you an update last month about all of the control valves that have been installed. I think I handed out a whole list of all things, most of which had been accomplished. And it's, and it is clearly paying off, not to mention that Bob just brought up a check for $29,000 that I will be passing along to the town as part of the rebate process that we underwent in order, as we applied for these dollars. So, that's an $80,000 turnaround from, so it's creating a fund balance in the heating fuel account. So, those two things represent $150,000 swing into the positive. So, that's really great news for us. We did pick up on the unemployment and for the FY '16 fiscal year, we budgeted 50,000. So, we had dropped it by $50,000. So, that's also in line with trying to continue to monitor as we knew more about what we were expecting. We're not anticipating laying anybody off this year and, again, that will telegraph to keeping our unemployment figures low. So, there have been a few shifts back and forth as we have been tightening up. Again, the shifting from our old system of payroll and moving into the Munis system, linking human resources and payroll, is helping us to refine how people are accounted for. There have been at least three to four different iterations of staff moving through, 100% of our staff and moving them. I had asked Gary and his team to do an update on the staff utilization. And so, we've then, Jane and Lisa went back through, checked with all of the principals in terms of where every staff member is, what they're actually doing, and, again, continuing to realign in the Munis database as we begin the process of moving forward and going live with our payroll system. The core is always the HR database. So, HR has taken the point. They've just worked really, really hard. And so, we're seeing some shifting there as how we're accounting for people. So, the dollars are staying pretty much the same, but they're shifting among some of the categories by one person here or there. And that makes a difference if you're talking about a teacher. So, you can see a swing of 60 to 80 or $100,000 in one account just because one person might have been called one thing and now they're called something else. And, again, it's an iterative process and it has been incredible teamwork. I want to thank Gary and his team and the entire business office as well as we continue to come down to, hopefully, we're doing our last parallel on the April 30th pay, beginning, well, we have a few more reports to write for the April 30th and then the team will begin the parallel for the April 30th payroll in Munis. So, again, that's kind of good news, bad news type of thing. If you turn to page three, you can see in the middle of the page, that unemployment compensation. We've got encumbrances through the end of the year of $12,734. I'm not projecting any further costs at this point in time and that's where that $70,876 comes in in terms of a fund balance, which, again, is great news for us in terms of dollars that can assist us in helping to cover some of our negatives and all. The purchase services really is, I'm sorry, contracted services is no significant swing. It's basically flat. I think it's $10,000 difference in terms of that. But, again, as we go to page four of seven, as you look almost, the third line from the bottom, you'll see that heating fuel. And you'll see that we have encumbrances of $289,756. As Bob and I discussed and I spoke with his assistant, Jennifer Magnoli, I also talked with Katie O'Neil, who's our accounts payable person, to find out what bills have been paid, how many more months do we have. Unfortunately, Santa Fuel is always very slow in sending us invoices. I'm not sure where their cash flow is coming from, but nonetheless, we keep moving forward. And so, Bob and Jen are confident that that $80,000, so you see that negative 80 in my projections there? That's meaning that Jennifer is going to be reducing our purchase order. Remember this whole cultural shift of creating purchase orders at the beginning of the year for what you think you're going to spend over the year. And this is the time where all of our cost center managers are starting to review and relook and reconsider the balances on all of their open purchase orders. And so, this is one of those where you see a negative both on electricity and heating fuel. Those are going to be adjustments down on the purchase orders, which will give us a potential fund balance of $80,000 to the end of the year. So, that's really the big news at this point in time. Shall I stop there or do you want me to keep going?
Any questions about anything so far?
I'm good.
Go ahead, if you wanted to.
No, no, those were really the two that I was very excited about, so I wanted to share them with you. Point them out. The other one, you always need to look at page five, as you can see. And Darlene and Laura, her assistant, are excellent at attempting to encumber whatever is known, reduce encumbrances. They've had one child that moved out of the country, so they reduced that encumbrance. And so, you know, those encumbrances come up, go down, and you manage the purchase orders based on whatever you know is happening. And you can see $795,129 as a negative. I can report to the board this time because you asked me last time, have we had any movement or at least any positive discussions with the town? And I am very pleased to tell you that Dawn and I had an extensive conversation last week. I'm going to be working up a draft of a report for her to look at to see if it will meet her needs in terms of doing a transfer of those funds that we would take in as a negative expenditure as the law requires. And so, we'll start working on that this week. I just ran out of time last week. So, we're at least making a few little inroads here and I am cautiously optimistic that we're going to get there.
We look forward to seeing those excess funds. Thank you for all the effort on them. Are there any other questions that anyone has? I think you've answered all our questions. We're all understanding and thank you very much for the effort that put that through. So, thank you. And go back to our agenda for tonight. And with the Statement of Accounts, now we move And with the statement of counts, now we move into the action items, and we need to look at the Saks remediation plan recommendation. Maybe -- I was looking for Patty.
Actually, the chairman of our committee is sitting right at the head of the table.
Yes, okay.
Sure, I'll just, I'll take a moment. We spoke about this a bit at our last meeting, the, our plan for the remediation of the couple of spaces that are known with the PCBs over at Saks. As you recall, this information, we came aware of this when, as a preliminary step to the Saks auditorium committee's work, we did some environmental testing with Ty &amp; Bond, and they looked at the auditorium and it's a requirement in Connecticut as these things are, as the projects are put together, to look for asbestos lead in PCBs. And unfortunately, we found the PCBs in the auditorium, and so we expanded some of our testing where we found, and we found some in the boiler room and also in the ceramics room. In order for us to move swiftly through the approval process, and since this is a code project that makes it eligible for a 20% reimbursement, we spun off the Saks remediation committee from the General Saks Building Committee so that we could go through the process as required by the state, but do it in such a way that we can meet the timelines required for the project to begin and be finished this summer. So the committee of three, which is myself, Nancy, and Bob, we have a quorum here tonight. We met and we've been working with our, with Ty &amp; Bond and with SLAM, actually. Gene Terone is our owners' rep on this project as well, to develop our proposal for probable costs. And so we've gotten to that point now. So what we're looking for tonight is voting an approval on that so that we can then continue our work in getting our planned documents together, having them go to local review, having them go to whatever state review is required, and do it very soon so that we can then turn it around, get out to bid, and be prepared to go for this summer. What we'd like to do, of course, is to begin the remediation over at Saks of those three areas. Again, it's the auditorium, the boiler room, and the ceramics room. Begin that as soon as we can this summer to be sure that we are finished and cleared and out for the students' return in August, the end of August. Of course, as a result of the work, it does not mean the auditorium would be available for anybody, because generally, when they do the remediation work, it can be pretty destructive in the environment itself because they are chipping up paint and removing sheet rock and doing other things like that. But it does mean that we would be clear, as far as that space goes, of the, of those hazardous materials, PCB. And then it would be set up for the work of the Saks Building Committee, which we heard tonight, so that the moment they are ready and that's gone to bid and is accepted and go, that space is ready for them to move right into and to begin. So with that sort of overview, I'll ask Nancy to get into the details with us for a moment.
Right. And as you may or may not be aware, we have engaged both SLAM and Ty &amp; Bond for this project. The board had requested to transfer $120,000 of our painting money, and we were granted that transfer. And then, of course, the town refilled the $120,000 very graciously, so Bob was able to do some more painting over the April break, and he'll continue to do that as soon as schools let out. But in the meantime, Ty &amp; Bond, Amy Valancourt, has been working not only with CTDEEP, Department of Environmental Protection, but because of the measurements on the PCBs, it kicks it up to the Boston office of the DEP, the, I'm sorry, the federal EPA. Too many initials here. But, so it has taken Amy better than two and a half months to work through the Boston office to get some approvals on the remediation plans. Their first preference was to go down into the cement floor of the auditorium at an extensive level. And unfortunately, the bead blasting can only go down two inches, and then it starts hitting rebar, which would interfere with the stability of the floor itself. So Plan B. So the budget that I've handed out to you, which is estimated at $737,600, and I rounded it to $740,000, includes the owner's representative fees, Ty &amp; Bond, not only testing, developing the plan, monitoring the, developing the bid documents, reviewing the bid documents with us along with SLAM, making recommendations, then monitoring the project, doing all of the testing, and then confirming that everything is squared away. So you can see that's a fairly sizable amount. Abatement materials, and then encapsulation materials. And then because, again, this is dealing with hazardous materials, we've created a 15% contingency where you might expect to see something lower if it weren't this type of a project. So that comes to $727,600. And we did have small amount of work done. We had the ceramics room floor cleaned so that the teacher could pull out student work and some of her equipment. And so that came to approximately $10,000. So then, bringing down to the second half of the page, we're going to request a budget of $740,000. We already have appropriated the $120,000. Brian and I have talked. I really feel as though we could probably carve out $30,000 from facilities rental. This facility generated a significant amount of rental dollars, so it's most appropriate. And if we could carve out a little bit more, we certainly will. So that leaves estimated additional funds required of $590,000. But the caveat is that although we already had the appropriation of the $120,000, in order to move forward, I'm going to look for a resolution that will address the entire $740,000 that we already have, the $120,000. And then included in that resolution will reference the facilities rental fund as well. So I'm going to work with Dawn on crafting that, but we need it all as one resolution so that we can bring it to the state. As Brian mentioned, because this is a straight code project, we would be eligible for the 20% reimbursement rate. There's no maintenance involved here or anything. We're just destroying stuff. So the state will give us the full 20%, back. But at the same time, I kind of drafted up some education specifications because every state-funded project must have educational specifications. So if you'd take a minute to read these, they're pretty straightforward. I did a little history and then kind of said in a few sentences what we're planning to So I, in addition to approving the proposed budget, I would appreciate it if you could also approve the Ed specifications, and we'll bring them both forward as part of our request through the Board of Finance and to the Town Council.
Okay. That's a big help for us to know exactly how to word this and for you to have done it. Let's start with questions first. Deanna?
I just have one question for you, Brian. I know you said that with the remediation work, that the auditorium is going to be closed next year to the students. Is there any possibility of the stage area being used? I know, I know there's not going to be any chairs and it's going to be a core, but, you know, it might help, you know, sort of take some pressure off some things if you could actually just use the staging area.
As a classroom.
As a cla, you know, for choir or orchestra, you know, any of those arts. I mean, once it's clean, you know.
Well, unfortunately, it's more than just cleaning as they're getting into it because they are doing the blasting of the floor, as Nancy mentioned. They're doing other, they're taking up the seats. They're doing a lot of work. At this point, really, the right and safe thing to do is to assume that it'll be closed outright, that the stage would not be available, because they may have to take up the stage and go underneath it. They may have to do other work that, you know, until they get in there and start to do that remediation work, we have that plan. It's really, probably, it's the safest thing to assume that we will not have, we wouldn't have access to the space, that it would not be a usable space. If it is, that's a bonus, but it really, you know, it would be probably too optimistic to count on anything like that at this point. Because when they go in and do this work, although they're very neat and clean and organized and orderly as they do it, their goal is to remove all hazardous material. That's, that's their goal. That's what they're hired to do. And then when they're gone, they set it up for the construction company to come in and do whatever work it has to. So I think we're better off taking a conservative approach and not planning on that being available. And if it is, great, but it's probably overly optimistic.
Because, because it's putting such a pressure on the middle school, it would be great and, and, you know, if, if Ty &amp; Bond or whoever's going to be doing the work, if there's any way to sort of, kind of take plyboard or whatever it is to kind of separate off that staging area, if it is okay, if it's okay. I mean, and you want it to be safe.
I know there's some paint behind the stage and some other areas that needs to be abated. So I think it is throughout there.
All right. Well, I'm sure you're looking at everything, so I just wanted, but I just wanted to make it known that I want.
You know, I'd rather come with good news and say yes, but I do think it's, it would be overly optimistic to count on anything like that at this point.
And I'm sure you don't mean, want anything to take a chance.
No, no. I don't want anybody to take a chance.
No, of course not.
Also, I want to give a kid some space.
Yes. Sangita?
I just had a question, just procedurally with this appropriation. So since we spun it off of Saks Building Committee, once we make a resolution and we say we want to move forward with that as a board, you have to go to the town to get the appropriation? And that's going to be a special meeting, is that through all the funding bodies? I was just kind of curious about.
Well, after tonight, I'll be getting in touch with the first selectman tomorrow to let him know that the Board of Education approved the project and give him that scope, and then together we'll chart out what the best path is to follow, recognizing, and Ms. Malisi does recognize, our need to be swift as we go through. And certainly, at every meeting we've had with the town bodies, all three of the town bodies, they understand our urgency here, because this really, it's a tight window for us. Because when you do remediation work, unlike, Jen, you asked about the construction, can we do that while students are in the building? And you can do that construction work when they're in the building, but you wouldn't want to do the remediation work with students in the building. So we have a very tight window to, to begin and end when we look at our summer. And it's not a very long summer, since we go right to the end of the third week in June. So we really, we're in a tight timeline, and, yeah, so, and everyone recognizes that. So I think we're, we're in a good place.
Okay, great.
And Gene Terone and I have talked in terms of, and also with Amy, in terms of the timing of bidding. So one of the things that we might begin is, as we're moving through the last phase of the appropriation, we might begin the bidding process, not complete it, but at least begin it so that we get a little bit of a jump in terms of being able to award it. Since the last day for children is the 19th, the last day for teachers is the 22nd, so the 23rd is it, showtime.
Yes, Gene.
Well, respecting this tight timeframe, I would like to move to approve the Saks remediation plan as recommended by the Saks remediation committee, as well as the attached educational specification for the code project and PCB recommendation, remediation.
Okay, we'll look for a second, and then we'll have some more comments or questions, if there are any. Is there a second? Sangita, okay. Are there any questions or comments? Yes.
Just one more question.
Yes.
I just understand that those, the numbers, these numbers include a little bit of trenching work for the Saks Building Committee.
Yes.
With respect to lighting and a sound control room.
Yeah. The trenching will be.
It's not very much.
It's, it's a nominal fee. Absolutely. If we're going to be in a destructive mode, we might as well trench at the same time.
Compliments to the co-chair of the committee for remembering that important fact, which to explain to other people that may not understand what goes in the trenches, that, why it would be important. People might be interested to know when you're doing it, why you're doing it.
We're looking, we're looking, we have a certain number of linear square feet that Gene worked up. It's for the aisle lighting and for.
Conduit.
Conduit. And for putting, conduit for aisle lighting, and I think conduit for putting the, having an interior sound control area in the audit, in the refurbished auditorium, as well as allowing for some re-raking.
So there may be a cost saving despite the catastrophe of the PCBs, that the project, that part may be a cost saver to put that in? Am I, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I think it's better to do it this summer than next summer, so we don't have to disturb anything that's been encapsulated. That was our thought.
And since part of, you'll see on the budget, the encapsulation materials, again, after the auditorium floor is bead blasted, then we're going to have to encapsulate it after we have trenched for any of the conduit. But that gives us the opportunity to build up some of that encapsulation, to modify the rake of the back of the auditorium slightly, or the front of the auditorium, depending on what ultimately is designed. Because we're going to be encapsulating anyhow, and a few more inches or so of material isn't going to, again, make a significant difference, not in this budget, but it'll make the floor be construction-ready.
And ADA, hopefully, has.
Yes, this is in, in concept, since the current auditorium does not meet the current ADA regulations, the Americans with Disabilities regulations.
That's terrific, thinking ahead. Well, we have then a motion, and it has been seconded. All those that are in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your hand. And it is unanimous of all those that are here, and passes. And thank you very much to all those that have worked on that.
And I do, I do want to quickly say thank you to, certainly to Bob and Nancy pulling this all together so quickly, and to the Saks Building Committee as well, who has worked very closely with us throughout, and it's great to work in partnership with them.
It is, it is. Moving now to item seven on the consent agenda, and there are three items on the consent agenda. Can I have a motion about the consent agenda? Thank you. Deanna?
To approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. And a second for that. Sheri? Thank you. All those in favor of that motion to accept the consent agenda? All, all the, raise your hands, all those, I'm sorry, I missed that. Yes, okay. That was unanimous with everybody. Announcements in future meetings.
Sure. So as mentioned earlier, we have scheduled a special Board of Education meeting for Tuesday next week, May 5th. It'll be at 5:00. It'll be at Saks in the Coral Room. And the single item on the agenda will be to discuss and vote upon the Saks Building project recommendation. It'll be our second reading for that. Expect lively discussion and hope that anyone with interest in this, the building project, is able to come and join us for that night or that afternoon. It'll be an important discussion. And then our next meeting will be on May 11th, after that, at our regular time, 7:00 here. And we'll be having our assistive technology presentation athletics discussion. And also, we'll be having an executive session there to talk about negotiations, specifically our upcoming teacher negotiations, as we start to already plan for July and August and that work, which is ahead of us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like a very exciting couple of meetings we have coming up. Are there any comments from the public? There being no comments from the public, then we will move to adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn to the executive session in accordance with CGS 121, 1210, B9. The matter under discussion is negotiations. And if I could have that motion, thank you, Sheri, a second. Thank you, Jen. All those in favor, please signify, and that's a unanimous decision. Thank you. We'll move right now to that session. We'll move right now to that session.